I would like to call to order the special meeting and work session of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. On behalf of members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge to the flag. Mr. Brown, would you do us the honors, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Everyone, please stand.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, only nine states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We will move on to Section 2, Reports and Information, 2.01, Proposed FY24 Operating Budget Presentations. Dr. Mitchell, who do we have with us this evening to present?
This evening, we have Scarlett Minto, our Chief Financial Officer. However, I will begin the presentation, and then after I conclude the first few slides, Ms. Minto will take over.
Sounds great.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Searls Law Vice Chair Best, and members of the board. The first introduction to Newport News Public Schools on our website is a page that starts with the following sentence: Each day in Newport News Public Schools, the focus is on one mission, ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. We believe in that statement, and the proposed budget is a financial picture of our commitment to the goals and values of our school division. The budget directs funds towards programs and people and activities that promote our collective goal, that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. And it builds on that, supporting skills and traits such as critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship, the Newport News Public Schools' profile of a learner. In tandem with our collective goal, the proposed operating budget also advances the collective commitments of our school division leadership team and the school board. Number one in this list of commitments is to ensure that schools are safe and secure environments for learning and teaching for students, staff, families, and visitors. You have heard a report on school safety and security at the last meeting, and this budget will support that. All of our efforts depend on a learning environment in which students and staff feel safe and secure, and this budget focuses on that like never before. Eliminating learning loss and speeding recovery is another key priority, and is supported by the other items on this slide. Together, all of these commitments are designed to promote the mission of our school division. Keeping the public in public education is essential to our work. As a school division, we strive to partner with parents, family members, businesses, faith-based organizations, military and public service communities, and all who can bring their expertise and experience to the educational table. We are proud to have our PTA members in our schools on a daily basis, and business partners like the Newport News Shipbuilding, Jefferson Lab, NASA Langley, and others who share specialized knowledge with our students and teachers. The Newport News Education Foundation includes local business leaders who meet monthly in this very room and provide scholarships, mini-grants, student recognition, and more. Our partnership with the city goes beyond funding, with parks and recreation providing countless opportunities for students, for example, and faith groups are providing educational supports to students on weekends and during the summer. I am also grateful for the many students, staff, and family members who serve on a multitude of advisory committees. These and other others provide invaluable insights and guidance. I share these thoughts because it is important to acknowledge the importance that community volunteers provide to the education process. They are irreplaceable sources of unfunded value on top of what our budgets provide. Now Scarlett Minto, our Chief Academic Officer, will review the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am pleased to present, be able to present to you this evening the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. I would like to start this presentation out by first reviewing our budget process. As you can see from this outline, beginning in November through December, the budget staff meet with each department to review their plans for the current year and to discuss budget expectations for the coming year. Then in January, we share what we learned from the departments and management about these needs with the school board. The goal of this process is to be very strategic in planning by targeting resources to the areas of greatest need. In February, we share early revenue projection information, and we work with the community and advisory groups and the school board to establish their priorities in alignment with the Division's Strategic Plan Journey 2025. In March, we present the superintendent's proposed budget to the school board, hold a public hearing, and after final approval, we submit a school board proposed budget to the City Council for consideration. As Dr. Mitchell has just spoke about, these are our budget drivers: Learning loss and recovery, attendance, student and staff supports, leadership and instruction, professional development, family and community engagement, recruitment and retention, school and building safety, technology supports, and operations and maintenance. Of course, this is not, the order has nothing to do with the importance. Everything's equally important on this list. Since the governor has not yet approved an amendment budget for FY2224 by any end, we must complete our revenue projections with the best information we currently have. Prior to sharing our proposed revenue projections for '24, I would just like to share with you a breakdown of the House and Senate Committee recommendations as compared to the governor's proposed. In short, we have quite a difference in teacher and support staff pay increases as we compare the governor, House, and Senate budget proposals. So, if you look, the governor is recommending a 5% teacher and support staff increase effective 7/1/23. The House is recommending a 7% increase, and the Senate's recommending a 7% increase effective 7/1/23. And when you look at the governor's recommendation there, he's recommending a 1% bonus effective September 2023. The House is not recommending a bonus, and the Senate is recommending a $1,000 bonus December 2023. As a frame of reference, for every 1% raise, it costs about $2.6 million. So, a 1% bonus would be $2.6 million, and a $1,000 bonus is estimated to be about $1.2 million. As you can see, the basic aid also varies between the governor, the House, and the Senate, and this is associated with the differences in compensation strategies. The Senate is including funding for additional temporary instructional assistance in the classroom and additional English language learner teachers. In total, the House is recommending $1.8 million less than the governor, and the Senate is recommending $17.9 million more. So, a spread like this is definitely making it challenging for school divisions to project state revenue. We hope to get an approved budget soon. The new budget would be effective July 1st, '23. This chart shows our state funding trend since 2009. We had stopped going back to 2009 because that's when the last great recession was. However, because they keep telling us that recession's coming again, it just might be interesting to go back, you know, and keep looking at that to see where, how bad it could get. So, the proposed state revenue for FY24 is based on enrollment projecting, projection of 25, 484 students for grades K through 12, and with that information, that gives us an estimated $20.5 million in additional revenue for FY24. City revenue without debt service. So, it's a little bit confusing. I've got two slides about this. For the same timeframe, we're looking at our city revenue, which has remained fairly level regardless of enrollment. This slide shows the funding and support from the city without debt service. Debt service is the payment and interest on debt the city incurs to fund their capital needs. The FY24, for FY24, the superintendent has requested $3.4 million increase in operating funds from the city to support our increased needs in security, staffing, and associated staffing with security, increased staffing for student wellness, and mental health supports. All of these are our budget priorities. Other areas, we are asking the city to partner with us on our maintaining our current student ratio of one-to-one by increasing our funding for technology and infrastructure. Also, support middle school sports and additional security hardware, which I'll be going into in more detail later. This is the city revenue with debt service, and why am I showing you that? This is another look, and this is the way the city views total support from the general fund, their general fund, for schools. So, when the city speaks about funding the school division, they include debt service as part of the funding because they have to use their general fund to pay the principal and interest on the debt. The dark blue bars are city funding for operating FY24, and we are asking for an increase of 100, from 116.2 million to 119.6 million, so that's 3.4 million. The light blue bar is their debt service. The city has taken out on the division's behalf for capital. Actually, for FY24, we're showing that they will have to pay $600,000 less on debt service for us in FY24, so that's a little savings. So, to see the total contribution of the city general fund to the school division, you have to add the operating plus the debt service, and that gets us $126.4 million for FY24. So, this is our revenue projection for FY24 with all this helpful information that we get from the state. The amount of revenue that we expect to receive from the state and locality drives what we'll be able to accomplish, so this is important information. As I have shared earlier, it is somewhat difficult to project our revenue until we get firmer information, but we have to have a budget, so this is what we do. So, for the state, we're going from, let's see, from $235.7 million to $256.2 million, which is a $20.5 million increase. The city, FY23, $116.2 million to $119.6 million. We have requested $3.4 million. Federal, we are still in the process of working on, they're on a calendar year basis, so we don't really know that we're going to have any change with that revenue. Other revenue, which includes fees and athletic events, stop-arm camera, we're expecting an increase of about $100,000, so a total of $24 million between FY23 and FY24. Wow, that sounds like a lot of money until you find out how we're going to spend it, right? It'll be gone in a minute. Okay, so now we have to speak about student enrollment. So, accurate enrollment projections are critical to the budget process because most state funding is based on a per-pupil basis, and a majority of our staffing is also based on enrollment. So, this picture here shows us that from FY11 to FY24, we've had this grand trend of our enrollment going down. From FY11 to FY23, we lost 2,968 students, but what I want to point out is from the time the pandemic started in FY22 now, we have lost 1,587. So, about 53% of the loss has happened over that period of time. This lost, this enrollment loss is Virginia-wide, not just here, and there, there's been a very slow recovery, some states faster than others, but definitely still have some growing. We're not sure where all these people went, but they need to come back, right? Pre-K student enrollment. So, these are our subgroups we're going to talk about. The state provides funding for a pre-K program, and they describe it as the Virginia Preschool Initiative. For FY24, we are projecting 16 less students. We are looking to expand this program in the next few years. More on that in a different presentation. Another one of our subgroups is English learner enrollment. So, the, we have seen growth in this group. During the pandemic, there was a little bit of a drop, but it's increasing again, and actually, the state has actually mentioned that, that they're expecting this to continue to trend up. So, that's about 41 more students next year. Special education student enrollment. We are anticipating about a 2% increase or about 73 more sped students. This is because we know we have more students currently going through the eligibility process. Then we have our military-connected students, which for those who don't know, this is the Impact Aid Program funding, partly compensates for the locality, for education, for children whose parents live or work on federally owned property, such as military bases or low-run housing. And because of this, the federal government is exempt from paying taxes on this property, which that caused the locality to lose funding, so this is how they, you know, help compensate for that. So, this is a little confusing drawing. So, you'll see 4,103 years in a row. This is because when we were in the middle of the process of Impact Aid in '20, they stopped the process and said, whatever number you have right now, turn it in, and we're going to go with it. And that happened for three years straight. Now, we have to reconcile to reality, FY23, and we have a drop of 758 students. I want to mention that the government has not paid us for the 4,100. They are very behind in their federal aid reimbursements. So, what else did I want to say about this? I think that's it. For some reason, okay, so now we'll take a little deeper dive into our budget priorities. Oops. We seem to be missing a slide here. Oh, there it is. Sorry, you guys. I seem to have hit enter way hard. Okay, so, speaking of student success, we, to continue to address learning loss and recovery, Newport News must provide funding for instructional and education materials. And these are some of the examples, and this list alone is $9.3 million in FY24. Tools for curriculum writing, course development, reading word banks, robotics in the classroom, SOL tutoring for students with SOL gaps, summer school funding by the status for remediation, so all those other great activities we do comes out of operating. Local assessment tools and math readiness are other things, and then we have some other one-to-one technology that we're working on as well. For student success, students need to be in school to be successful, so we are increasing our attendance officers and attendance specialists. We have 12, and we're going to be adding six more. Doing this will allow us to reduce school caseloads, increase court and human services referrals, and increase parent contact. Student and staff wellness. Since August of 2022, our support services program has canceled close to 5,000 students. This program requires various expertise to include school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, student support specialists with a qualified mental health professional certification, clinical mental health therapists, and behavior specialists. New for FY24 to this team, we will add behavior support coaches, licensed clinical, more licensed clinical social workers, and school-based program support specialist. So, the behavior support coaches will provide coaching, supporting, and guiding school-based staff in using evidence-based practices to provide positive behavior supports for students with challenging behaviors. School-based program specialists will free up school guidance counselors by taking on the SST 504 meetings and following up on attendance issues, incident reports, and threat assessments. In total, Newport News Public Schools needs to continue to fund more staff than is required by the SOQ, Standards of Quality Requirements, in FY24. And I just want to mention, a lot of these specialized positions are not even considered SOQ at all. I wanted to mention the FY23 middle scores program update before I get into the '24. So, for FY23, we have spent so far $351,000 so far getting ready for middle school sports. We bought uniforms, concession stuff, and materials and supplies. And if you look over to the schedule, we are working to kick off boys and girls soccer in the fall. By January 24, we're going to kick off wrestling and cheerleading. And by March, football. I know a lot of people are anxiously awaiting football. But we have some unfunded needs for the middle school sports, about $2.2 million, which we are asking the city to partner with us on that. So, some of those items are the outdoor school board, scoreboards for seven locations, replacing the field at Todd Stadium with artificial turf. We have a list of sports fields here that we would like to get redone. Some of them are for practice, some are for games. We also need football equipment, helmets, shoulder pads. It doesn't take long to add up to 2.2 million. But if we can get all this in a timely fashion, this will enable us to get all of our sports active by March of 2024. Employee expertise. So, we have a, staff development remains important to this, for, to provide staff with innovative professional learning opportunities to ensure we maintain an efficient and effective workforce. Some of these opportunities that we have this year will continue into next year, about $730,000 for some of these things, including the Model Teacher, the Innovate Conference, and the Career Switcher Program. So, Model Teacher is a way to, job embed support, and one way we do this is through our model classroom program. So, model teachers develop welcoming learning environments in which students feel safe and colleagues are excited to collaborate and explore together. It's a growth opportunity. The Innovate Conference, which we've been doing for many years now, gives all staff an opportunity for individualized learning based on their interest. All subjects, instructional, technology, integration classes are available, and we usually have a number of expert speakers join us at these conferences. The Career Switcher Program's helping staff change careers with guidance, training, and support from their leadership team. There are so many to list, but these are some of the ones that have been around a while. And of course, the top subject of the night, employee compensation. Faced with a local and national teacher shortage means paying competitively, it's even more important to enable us to attract and retain the best teachers to work with our students. This chart, we use to compare our teachers to other school divisions. The top is bachelors, and the bottom is the master degree teachers. The top blue line box shows the number of years of service, zero to 30. As you can see from this chart, following the yellow brick road across, it compares them with their peer school districts by teachers' years of service. We have some work to do with years zero to five, teachers' experience of zero to five. For FY23, our current starting pay for zero years of experience is $50,000. This slide shows the history of bus drivers' pay. The red arrow is pointing to FY23. We are not recommending an increase to bus driver's starting pay for FY24. We, however, we will continue to recommend some bonus incentive initiatives to attract and retain bus drivers, so I will be getting to this soon. But you can see for FY23, we're competitive with Hampton in York County. Remember, this is the starting pay. We have drivers with 10, 15 years of experience. They're getting paid much more than $20, I mean, $20 and 16 cents an hour. Supports staff salary comparison. This slide shows other support positions that have been challenging over the years to attract and remain staffed. So, that'll be our custodians, our child nutrition workers, instructional assistants, security officers, and school nurses. This chart shows for FY23, our compensation strategy with these groups have paid off, and in many instances, we are paying the highest hourly rates. We are having less issues retaining these staff as compared to previous years, although recruitment and retention of the staff does remain challenging because all the divisions are vying to fill these same positions. Okay, so Newport News Public Schools must market competitive compensation to attract and retain the best staff. So, for FY24, our budget recommendations include support staff increases of 5%, reduced teacher salary compression steps one to five, increased starting pay, teacher starting pay, and provide some experience adjustments if funding permits to prevent compression. So, if we're able to do the compression adjustments, teacher salary increases will be from 7 to 10.4%. We would like to increase teacher's starting pay to, from 50K to 52.710, which will help us move ourselves back up in the chart where we're low on step zero, zero to five years of experience. We also have, we have a smaller applicant pool out there for teachers and bus drivers, and all the divisions are in search of these people. So, recruitment remains a challenge. So, as funding permits, we would like to continue to offer sign-on bonuses and referrals for teachers and bus drivers. That'll cost about $500,000 if we compare it to the school year, it'd be about that. Moving on to enhanced partnerships. We are continuing to work on our partnerships with family and community partners, as Dr. Mitchell spoke about. For fiscal year 2024, this spending plan will continue to fund 26 family engagement specialists, who will work with families and teachers in improving the achievement level of students by assisting parents with learning activities, disseminate information regarding family engagement goals and objectives, books, resources, and provide tutoring services to reinforce skills. This is a program we're just really starting to get into, and we're looking to expand on family engagement over the next several years. Stewardship of resources. The spending plan is intended to reflect good stewardship of our resources. So, we make financial and human capital decisions. We will ensure it's done with a focus on student and staff needs using organizational data and equitable practices. For FY24, the superintendent's proposed budget ensures adequate resources to provide for safe and secure workplaces and school buildings, maintain one-to-one computer-student ratio and the associated infrastructure, maintain our STEM, maintain our STEM cards, provide adequate our STEM cards, provide adequate funding for operation and maintenance of our schools and buildings. Our security priorities include an elevator upgrade at Menchville, replacement of aging playground equipment at Newsom Park and Charles. We'd like to get two hundred additional radios for our school personnel and in particular ensure our sped teachers have one. Replace aging fire and intrusion alarm systems at a number of our schools. And install cameras at Todd Stadium, school board office and parking lot cameras. And additional metal detectors for backup. In addition, we are proposing an increase of thirty additional security officers and a director of safety and emergency management to ensure oversight and compliance over improved safety and security initiatives. We have identified one point, we have identified one-to-one technology supports that need to be moved from CARES grant funding into the operating budget. These are some of the items we're looking at first. Hot, air hot, mobile hotspots that we give the students who do not have internet at home, Chromebook extended warranty and coverage for the broken Chromebooks. We have a high rate of broken equipment. Gaggle safety management maintenance replaces, replacement of power adapters for Chromebooks or iPads and our data and privacy security software. So all this stuff is adding up. By the end of FY twenty-four, we will need to address up to four million dollars annually moving from the CARES budget into the operating. So this is our first step to try to get that all done, one point six million. We believe maintaining one-to-one technology in schools is critical to ensuring we maintain equitable learning environments and ensures that every single student in the district has the resources they need to receive an education. And this education can take place during the day, after hours and on weekends or during implement weather events, events, for example. I don't think we would be at one-to-one today if it had not been for the pandemic. It's very expensive. We knew we couldn't afford it, so we would never got ourselves into this. But now that we're into, we have to figure out, you know, we're still waiting to hear from the state if they're going to help support this, but right now, we're definitely looking at no special support from the state on this subject. Additional technology needs. We have a refresh cycle. It's time to refresh our middle school teacher laptops at a cost of about one point one million. Oftentimes, we get additional funding for computers. It's only for students, so it makes it very difficult to keep us on a refresh schedule with their staff. Operations and maintenance funding is something that has to happen, but it often takes a backseat to funding for compensation and benefits. We need to remember there is an impact on students, teachers and the facility's life cycle when maintenance gets deferred. For FY twenty-four, one point nine million represents an increase over FY twenty-three to maintain our electrical systems, repair and replace flooring, maintain our landscaping, ensure working plumbing systems and repair or replacement of carpentry in our schools. We have already talked about a number of these staffing positions throughout this presentation, but I wanted to summarize this for you. All but the security officers and the director of safety and emergency management will be addressed by repurposing vacant FTEs. About nine hundred thousand will be absorbed by repurposing positions. The difference will be about one point eight mil- million additional dollars needed to fund these additional positions. So we have six clinical social workers, five school-based program specialists, six attendance specialists, one visual and performing arts specialist, the director of safety and emergency management, thirty security officers, school security officers, one youth development secretary and one youth development specialist. Health benefits are another part of our employee compensation. This bar chart to the left shows our claims cost per member over the past ten years with a projection for this year and next. This is calendar year, by the way. Our claims have increased twelve percent in the past three years. For FY twenty-four, we are anticipating the claims cost per member to increase about four hundred and ninety-three dollars per member. If you look to the right of the bar chart, you see there's a historical on health costs since FY fourteen, so this shows how it's been handled by the school board, how much the school board has absorbed and how much has been passed on to the employee. So for example, in FY twenty-three, the school board had a two million dollar increase in premium and the employee had about a three percent increase. For FY twenty-four, we are expecting a two point four million dollar increase in premium. What we are recommending here is that the school board absorb two million and pass on four hundred thousand to the employee. And what that would look like is if you have an individual plan, your increase would be anywhere from five dollars to seven dollars and sixty-four cent a month. If you have a family plan, your increase would be anywhere from twenty-two, twenty-eight a month to thirty dollars and seventy cent a month. We've already seen this, but I just wanted to show it one more time because there's some things coming after it. So again, we're expecting a twenty-four million dollar increase in revenue, three hundred and eighty-one point four million in total. This is our FY twenty-four operating budget by major source. Our two largest funding partners are the city of Newport News and the Commonwealth, which is ninety-eight percent of our revenue. For FY twenty-four, two hundred and fifty-six point two million is Virginia, sixty-seven point two percent of the three hundred and eighty-one point four million. And a hundred and nineteen point six would be the city or thirty-one point three percent of the three hundred and eighty-one point four million. This is the operating budget by function. As you would expect, instructional services is the largest part of our budget, seventy point five percent for FY twenty-four. The next biggest slice would be operations and maintenance, which is forty-two point seven million. That includes plant services, custodial services, security and warehouse services, followed by transportation for twenty-six point five million or six point nine percent of the three hundred and eighty-one point four million. Taking a look at FY twenty-four staffing, fifty percent or one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven point two of the budget at full-time employees for FY twenty-four are teachers and they're represented into the dark blue. And I want to mention that we have used ten positions. As our enrollment continues to drop, we have to start reconciling, so we have removed ten position and repurposed those for other things. We also have two hundred and forty-four budget at full-time instructional assistants. We have four hundred and sixty-nine positions in transportation. We have eleven percent for custodial, maintenance and security staff. Other positions you'll see over to the top right corner includes nurses, school counselors, media specialists, psychologists, technology, ITCs. That's about five percent or two hundred and eight point nine positions out of the three thousand nine hundred and four point five total FTE for FY twenty-four. This is a visual showing the FY twenty-four spending plan broken down by the division's strategic plan goals. The largest part of this funding plan is allocated to student success. Two hundred and forty-two point eight million of the three hundred and eighty-one point four million is dedicated to what we need for student success. Stewardship of resources includes equipment, contracts and services. That'll be eighty-three point nine million or twenty-two percent of the FY twenty-four spending plan. And we have the other smaller pie slices. Student and staff wellness, twenty-eight point two million. Employee expertise, eighteen point two million. Enhanced partnerships, eight point three million. Oh, how did we balance this budget, right? Okay. This is a little busy slide. So the superintendent must propose a balanced budget, so this slide shows how loosely how it was done. If you recall, we are projecting twenty-four million in new revenue and that's based on twenty point five from the state and our request for an additional three point four million from the city for operating. Our increase total of needs is thirty point seven million, so that leaves us a six point eight million dollar variance. We are going to balance that by making the assumption that we're going to continue to have turnover and attrition. So we have one point eight million for turnover, three point five million for attrition. We are also making the assumption that we will pass on health plan costs to the employee at the, say, four hundred thousand dollars there. And then we have one-time costs, which is contracts we don't renew, all kinds of things that only happen one time in twenty-three that will not reoccur in twenty-four. So that's one point one million totaling six point eight million. So now over to your left, it says city request for cash capital. So what we are proposing here is that we have, we are asking the city to partner with us on these initiatives and address that funding cap, that funding gap with cash capital instead of operating. As, to remind you that the building safety would include more radios, metal detectors, camera, fire and burglar alarms. It also would help support the Todd Stadium HVAC, Todd Stadium artificial turf and some work on our playing fields. Would also support playground equipment at Newsom Park and Charles Elementary. It is my understanding in the past that the city partnered with us on playground equipment. Somehow we got off of that, so we're going to re-initiate it this year and ask for them to partner with that, on that with us. So the next steps, March fourteenth, we're going to have a public hearing. And March twenty-first, I'm going to ask you to approve a budget. And that concludes my review of the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you. All right, board members, questions at this time? Go ahead, Douglas.
Yes, so manager, I do have a few questions. You know, one, just going back to slide twenty-four, which is about the middle school sports.
Okay.
I would want to point out, so the replacement of the artificial turf at Todd Stadium, we would have to do that regardless of whether we were pursuing middle school sports or not. Is that, is that fair to say? That that replacement of artificial turf is simply needed for all the sports?
Actually, if you can recall, we have been recommending this a number of years and there was other priorities. What I think we're trying to say here, and Rusty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the stadium's not getting used the way it should be. We think it's a hindrance with the turf. We would like to get it that it's used regularly and it can actually pay for itself. It's been a number of years since we've had enough games there for it to even begin to pay for itself. So this would be an investment in that direction.
Right, and this, having the artificial turf allows us to host state meets.
Exactly.
Gives us, it qualifies us to have more events there.
Yes.
Generate revenue at the stadium. But I want to point out for folks that are watching and for people who are looking at the budget, we would need to do this not, regardless of whether investing in middle school sports or not. And so I just, I wanted to, I believe I want to point that out.
Yes, I think this was their.
Go ahead. Come on up, Rusty.
I think that's a great point. I don't know that this necessarily adversely impacts middle school sports, but from a high school sport perspective and more opportunities for our kids in our communities. Absolutely.
And so just from that perspective, I'd like to, I'd like to point out when we make our request for, from city council that we break this out because I'm totaling it up. It's less, the investment for middle school sports is less than a million dollars. The replacement of the turf at Todd Stadium is something that we need to do for all the kids, but the investment in middle school sports is less than a million dollars.
We can clarify that.
I agree.
We can definitely clarify that.
And, and then my, my other question just goes to the CARES Act. Funding, we're having to shift money that was previously in CARES Act and move that over. I think, so I've seen in previous years in our discussions with council, I don't think they necessarily understand how much money is left, when the money expires. And so I'd like to just make the suggestion that we be very clear about how much CARES Act funding we still have left, when the money is expiring and what we can't use it for, because that's been a lot of back and forth and understanding their position that they want us to make sure that we're exhausting all the CARES Act funding before we come to them. But I just want to point that out that I think we need to just make it clear how much money is left.
Absolutely.
We talked about that.
And then I think in previous years, we had talked about, or at one point in time, there wasn't a, there was some kind of an agreement with city council about the funding of our technology, or I know that other localities have had technology funding come out of a specific, a specific revenue. And I just wanted to address at this point in time now, has there been any further discussion about having a revenue stream set up specifically for technology, for our computer refresh? Knowing that we are now a technology division, we're one-to-one and we have this four and a half million dollar bogey each year, has there been any further discussions about that?
No, but we need to talk about it. There is some history. It actually, it looks like they actually took debt out in the past for technology. This is like way back when. But you know, something like a computer, you don't want to go in debt, twenty years of debt for a computer. So we definitely, that's something that in my mind, needs to be increased operating funds to support.
Okay, so making that part of our, part of our annual, annual asset setting up a budget for, just because.
Some percentage of increase based on the inflation rates and those sort of things.
That's what I'm saying, is that this is going to continue to grow as, as the years go on, we're going to have to replace more computers and, and do that sort of thing. So we need to probably make it a regular part. It seems like we're asking it a sort of a one-off.
Correct, like we're doing with buses. We get a certain amount for buses, we get a certain amount for technology.
Yep.
Okay. And then just my last comment, I don't know if there's anything that we can necessarily do about it, it may just be the nature of where we, where we are right now, just going to the slide forty-six. We're at that set, we're at seventy percent, about seventy-one percent for instructional services. And in years past, I believe we were in the eighty percent range. And so there's the, I'm not sure there's, again, I'm not sure there's anything we can necessarily do about it, but.
This one?
But, you know, have we given some more thought to why we are now down at seventy percent versus eighty percent, just ensuring that we're maintaining our core focus, which has been?
I think eighty percent sounds a little high. I'm thinking you might be thinking about our total, when we break up our total expenditures between non-personnel and benefits and salary, that's around eighty-six to eighty-seven percent. I think that's what you're thinking of.
That's what I was going to say, because typically I think we encompass instructional
This is usually around seventy-two percent. And as the dollars get bigger and we change how we use our staff, this pie chart changes slightly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just make one comment there because I had, I noticed that too. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the graph or the pie chart that I'm recalling had the instructional services and the admin attendance and health.
So this is by function, you may be thinking of by category.
Yes.
That's right, I think we're thinking by category.
We have many different.
Which is a different breakout.
Yes, by category is different.
So can we get that additional slide put in?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not good with change.
Okay, this end, Saman?
Yes, thank you. I have just a couple of questions and clarifications. When you mentioned the additional attendance staff and also the emotional mental health staff, the thought is that that will take some of the burden off of the counselors, so they're freed up to be, do more counseling.
That's absolutely correct.
I got Todd Stadium to answer. There was a note that some of the positions we're looking to add or being effectively filled by vacant, full-time employee spots. Are those, is that turnover or are those spots that just aren't practical anymore? We don't?
You know, it's actually, we're actually able to go back and look and say, hey, we haven't filled this position for two or three years. Let's repurpose it.
Okay.
Instead of adding FTE.
And then I just wanted to, you know, right now, we're looking at sort of, not a Band-Aid, but sort of the first pass of, we're coming off of the CARES funding, we're going to need to be dealing with these one-to-one devices. And it's probably more of a holistic conversation to be had that the city knows kind of what to expect. But one of the things sort of that came to my attention when I was visiting Menchville the other day, and I expect it's similar throughout the division. You know, I know, say, student available, say printers for, you know, those types of projects, not in the office. I think the one they had was the kind that you think in an office, office, you might have. a handful of professionals using, but not a school's worth of thousand, two thousand students. Since we have more devices with the students, we may also, and maybe we're already doing this for future planning purposes, want to take a look and see what additional technology makes sense, be it printers or those sorts of capabilities in school, since all the students have devices. Are we going to be needing to use some more of these? And is what we have logical?
So you're saying a more holistic approach, not just focusing on the Chromebooks and that? Yes, absolutely.
But we may have other needs that we haven't identified, because everyone does have a device and we're starting to use technology differently.
We can definitely look into that and have a more holistic recommendation.
Not for this year, otherwise, thank you.
Ms. Saman, is that all? Okay. Let's see. Maritza?
Just in terms of, and I'm just, the whole thing with foreseeability. So middle school sports, transportation, how will that change? If we can let the public know, is that something that we're going to work on to make sure we can meet the needs?
I know we are absolutely already discussing it.
Right.
Do you want to make, I will let Mr. Fairheart speak to that?
Thank you, great question. Working with Mr. Coats, Executive Director for Transportation, his team, bouncing some scenarios about when start times will be for middle school athletics, if we potentially need to inform the public about some potential change in start times. Certainly bring that before you all for consideration in advance. But obviously, when we have one, a couple of our middle schools that dismiss a one fifty-five and a couple that dismiss a three fifty-five, there's a supervision issue between one fifty-five and three fifty-five.
There's a ripple with that.
There is, and obviously, we can't just move two middle schools to one tier without impacting other schools. So we're currently under that process, shared an initial preview with Dr. Mitchell. And we're continuing to do some work, we got some feedback, and we'll bring that to you at some point in the future.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Because it just came to mind.
Sure.
We've talked about having an alternate location for in-school suspension for some students. Have, has that, wherever that's going to be, has that been factored into this budget?
Actually, we are working on that in twenty-three, and we are actually, again, repurposing positions, moving some positions around and sharing locations. So we're being very creative with that, not to create a new, brand-new burden. We actually have the resources we need.
Excellent, thank you.
I can cross that off of my list.
Check.
Thank you.
Went off the list.
Keep going, you all, I might get to cross my whole list off. Maritza, was that all that you wanted to share? Okay, thank you. All right, let's see. Mr. Hunter, did you have anything this evening?
I do not.
And then Dr. Best?
Mine were answered.
Yours were answered, great.
Thank you.
So I just had the one. I'm excited about, you know, just us being into the schools a lot and being able to talk about alternative options for students and that we're able to answer in real time some of those requests. So thank you for you all making that happen with the money that we have versus us being worried that we couldn't do it, because we didn't have the funds immediately. I know we did have a little bit of conversation about teacher retention bonuses.
Yes, we did. I, that is going to be, we are working to figure out if we can fund that with CARES funding. Honestly, there's no way we can afford that in the operating budget unless some, we get some extra five million dollar drop in from the state revenue, which I'm not expecting. But that's what the CARES funding is for, that sort of thing. So we are working on that. We did get a verbal that it would be approved, but we have to get, you know, balance that budget and make sure everything's covered before we say yes. So I just need a little more time before I make a promise I can't keep.
I will keep it on my list.
Okay, I know you know my number.
I do. Any other questions that have popped up as we've been discussing? Are we good? Well, I definitely want to thank you all. We've been through a lot here recently, and to be able to get us a sound budget to present to us and have it make sense, we really do appreciate it. And the fact that it answers the current concerns, but doesn't minimize or ignore things like, you know, eliminating our learning loss and making sure that we're moving from, with our funding for one-to-one. So I thank you all for working hard on that. So the next item on our agenda is comments by the superintendent. She may have already done hers, but I will give her the floor if she needs to.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do have a few more.
Oh, good.
This week is National School Social Work Week, so I wanted to take this opportunity to truly thank our school social workers for not only their dedication to supporting our students, but their dedication to supporting families as well. Many people aren't aware that not only do they support our students, but they reach out and support families. They have an exceptional skill in providing services to students who face challenges to school success, and they really do serve as a vital member of our team. So we do want to acknowledge them today. Additionally, it is also Plant Services and Custodial Services Week in our school division. So we want to take a moment to thank our staff for their dedication and their professionalism. We are often truly complimented on the cleanliness and maintenance of our buildings. So on behalf of not only our students and staff and everyone else, we want to thank you all, the custodial staff, for what they do in plant services for our schools and keeping our offices as well as our schools great places to learn and work. And you know that this is March, and we have March Mania, Saturday, March the eighteenth. This is going to be held from ten o'clock in the morning until two P M. at Warwick High School, which of course is on Copeland Lane and Warwick Boulevard. So this is for all of our students and families pre-K through high school. So I want to say that again, it is for our preschoolers through high school. We are inviting you to join us on Saturday, the eighteenth. We want you to enjoy a day filled with fun, interactive, fun stations. There's going to be a high school and a middle school basketball invitational. There will be basketball clinics, an elementary math competition, as well as other outdoor activities. There will be a registration process for our preschoolers. We will be able to begin, if you have a preschooler or someone ready for preschool next year, you will be able to come, you will get assistance with registering your child. We will have community resources and food trucks also, so please make sure you register. Just a very quick reminder that we do have our draft twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school division calendar. It is available for community review. To view the proposed calendar and provide feedback, please visit our website. We do want to hear from you, what you think about our proposed calendar. And the last reminder is for parents, Friday, March the tenth. Remember that our schools are closed for students. It is a professional development half-day for our staff and an opportunity in the afternoon for family conferences if needed. Also, parents, students do not report on Monday, March the thirteenth. It is a full-day teacher planning. So Madam Chair, that concludes my comments for this evening, and thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll just move on to matters by the school board. I will start with Ms. Alger, if you have comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for an excellent job and taking the time and working through the budget. So just a couple of things. Myself and Dr. Best, we've been around visiting schools for the past three weeks. We visited about ten schools, to be exact. And it's been really interesting, because one of the things that we've done is we've paired up to kind of look at things, if you've heard of medical rounds where doctors are going around in the, right, visiting patients and what have you to make sure that there's quality and safety. So it's kind of the same, if you, if you will, the same kind of thought, same kind of idea. Going to buildings and looking to see as you're walking in, what does it look like? What does it feel like? Getting a baseline, because we know that over time, things will change and things will tighten up. We hope that they're tightening up right now, and we've seen it already. But there's still, you know, of course, more layers that we expect. And I'll let Dr. Best share a little bit more, but you know, it's, it's, it's been great. It's, it's been really good. We've been getting good feedback from teachers as well as leaders, parents. We have stopped parents, Dr. Best can tell you where we are in there, just making sure that we're communicating with folks. So thank you.
Ms. Saman?
Sure. As I mentioned, I was over at Menchville last week, and it was really encouraging to see, you know, sort of the additional safety steps, and they've gotten another set of detectors and working through it. Everyone's figuring out what you can and can't have in your backpack. So that'll get smoother as time goes on, but great visit. Got to see a number of programs and and classes. I also had a chance last week to visit, I got a chance to, while we've been working on middle school sports from a top-down approach, and the uniforms and everything, our elementary schools have been taking on basketball, and who knows what other sports they'll be taking on. So I had a chance to visit the Riverside versus Yates, or Yates versus Riverside. Basketball games, fourth and fifth graders, and it was really neat. They had T-shirts or jerseys, they'd kind of done it on a shoestring, but the kids were super excited, played really well. I think there's going to be, I understand there's going to be a tournament at McIntosh on St. Patrick's Day. I believe it's sort of split between these schedules, because some elementary schools are on different schedules. So if you're on an early schedule, you'll play early schools, and later schedule, you'll play the later school teams. But that was just really neat to see the initiative and the kids excited. And it was, it was very loud and exciting and thoroughly enjoyed it. So I will try to do the other, but if anyone has, gets a chance, I encourage you to pop in for one of those. Neat things are happening.
Sounds great. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just want to thank the folks down at Discovery STEM Academy for having me and one of my colleagues that worked to come read to our first graders in our kindergarten. So it's very enlightening, the kids were fun, and it was a great day. I really enjoyed myself down there and talking to the young kids and kind of being back in the classroom was exciting. So as I stated last week, great things are happening in our school district, and just wanted, had a good time out there, joining with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, I want to make some more comments about our budget, and I want to thank Madam Superintendent and your staff for putting together what is really, I believe, an excellent budget. I think we have a lot to be thankful for and a lot to be hopeful for in the future. And for the public, I know that the machinations of the General Assembly are going to create some change for us, but we have gotten used to that now, or we're prepared that if we have to vote twice, we'll vote twice when that comes around. But we have a lot of things that we, I think as a board, can be very proud of. And I want to say, because I've had the, the privilege of being up here to see us really move, there was a time when we were in the bottom half of pay. And we are now, I want to say hats off to the board, because it took a real commitment by all of us that we are an excellent paying division. And I say excellent paying division, because we are in the top half, we're at number one and number two in almost every category, and there was a time when we were in the bottom half. So a focus on doing raises every year is how we got there. And we have to remain focused on that, and I'm very happy that in this budget, we're, we're still continuing to do raises. And I just want to employ the board that we have to continue to do that, because that's how you, you maintain your competitiveness and your effectiveness. And so that, I think that means, actions speak louder than words, I believe that very strongly. So telling our employees that we value them is one thing, but showing them through the, through the pay that we offer is quite another in terms of valuing their work. And so I see here, not only in our teacher compensation, but it's the support staff compensation as well, that we're now being number one and number two, and so taking that really seriously. I want to say hats off to the board, and I appreciate everyone's work in that area. A seven to ten point four percent raise for all of our teachers, that's a, that's a big deal. I think that's going to be close to one of our records, in terms of if we, if we get this passed, it'll probably be the highest pay raise that we've ever done. So I don't want that to just go without saying up here that that's a really big deal if we manage to, to get that through. So hopefully, the General Assembly and the governor pull things together so that we can pass that raise. That's going to be, I think, a big deal for our locality. I also want to mention about middle school sports and how excited I am to finally be seeing middle school sports. And I'm very believing and hopeful in what that's going to do for our community. I believe that sports does have the ability and the power to change our community in very positive ways. Very excited about what middle school sports is going to mean, not only for, for our high school programs, but as well for elementary school. You heard already that it inspires the elementary school kids to start participating in activities as well, and it helps those middle schoolers, and it's going to help those middle schools as they enter into high school to be able to participate in a club activity or sport and really transform the after-school for our kids. So I do believe that that's really going to not only increase safety, but increase opportunity for all of our students. And so I'm really excited about that. I know it's been a long process, but I'm looking forward to going to some middle school sports games next year. I'm looking forward to seeing that. And then finally, excited about what we're doing in the areas of security. I know that we have done a full look at all of what we consider to be our weaknesses and the staffing increases that we have here in, in security and these, and other key positions are what we believe are going to allow us to increase our safety and be a school division that folks can rely on for, for safety. So I think there's a lot of really good work being done in the budget, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, we'll get a chance to pass all of it.
Me too, thank you. Dr. Best?
Thank you. I too would like to commend our interim superintendent and staff for a great job with the budget. Thank you. I always say, when I can understand it, you've done a really good job. So I do appreciate that. And as Ms. Alger said, we've been in the schools for the past three weeks. It's really been just great to be back in there, and we have set up a regular schedule where we're going to visit schools every week. And we don't go to the schools to interrupt their instructional day. We don't ask the principal, not at this time, to set out a block, to meet with us, to, to tell us about the wonderful things. We have a focus area, and it was on safety and kind of climate and culture for this round of visits. And we just want to see organically what is going on, you know, in a particular day. And like she said, we saw some really great things and lots of positivity. And we saw so many staff members going above and beyond the call of duty and just giving each other just lots of props for what they do, you know, as a team. So we just saw a lot of good things happening in the schools. And in addition to visiting those schools, I also had an opportunity to read, for Read Across America Week at Discovery STEM and Newsome Park as well. And I was reading with the fifth grade class, I was reading the chapter book, and I intentionally left them kind of hanging, and they were like, oh, you can't go. And, but I was hot and I was tired, it had been a long day, and it was time for them to get back to instruction. So some kind of way, I ended up promising everybody a book, to buy, to purchase that book. And when I looked and I saw the price of that book, I was like, oh, God, I did it again. So I just kind of put out the word that I promised this class, this particular set of books, and I need, and help came from everywhere, and, and some of the first people to answer the call, they were teachers. So now I actually have enough for two classes, I'm working on number three, so they're going to get the book so that they can finish that book, and that was really, really nice to be able to, you know, to do that. And, and the kids still have a thirst for learning and a joy for reading, so that made me feel really, really good. And I think that is about it. So when you see us coming around to your school, please don't get nervous. It's not about, I got yous, it's we're here to help you and what do you need kind of business. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, that leaves me. I, I really have enjoyed this budget season, because we really hit on a lot of things that were what we needed to pay attention to. And it was, it was really a group effort in trying to address, even as far as meeting with council and individuals in the city to say, what does it look like we need? So not just saying to them what we need, what do you, what do you think looks like we need? And I think that conversation and working with the mayor and, and council has been very rewarding. So when we present this budget there, there won't be surprises, and that's a good feeling. It's, it's a really good feeling to know that we have that rapport with them. I have thoroughly enjoyed my boardwalks. Mine are not quite as structured as Ms. Alger and Dr. Best's. I go in, I say hello. I go in, I say hello, I ask how I might be of help, and most of the time the students start grilling me, who are you? And that's so fun, and we get to talk and, and visit. So I'm finding that that is what's bringing this full circle for me, is to make sure that I get to see why we're doing the why, is to see those students. And I really got a neat display, Dr. Best and I, and Ms. Alger went to Sedgfield Elementary for their Black History program, and it was phenomenal. So we have to remember what our why is. So with that, I don't want to be remiss on understanding that we've lost a member of our Warwick community over at the end on Friday. So I'm going to end this meeting with just a moment of silence, and then we will adjourn.